I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the citizens of it for our friendship among united cultures.
And then our indication will be Ms. Darling.
Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for another day. We are not always promised that. Please be with our first responders and military as they strive to protect our freedoms. Be with our council today. Help them to make decisions that are best for all of our county. And I pray that you will be with us each and every day to always put you first. In your name, amen.
Amen.
All right, Ms. Franklin.
So we'll proceed with the public comment and announcement period if there are any public comments. Sir. You may.
Thank you for this. First of all, thank you very much. I'm going to proceed here. I walk up here to the seat. My name is Joel Onzuris. I live on the Italian Road, El Loco Road in Loving, New Mexico. There's a process going on right now of Love's Truck Stop building on Kimbries area. My concern is because my family's up on top and we're at Eddin. There was a vote maybe three or four years ago about letting it go. And there was a, and I thought it was let go. Well, I looked into it and eventually there was a second vote. And you didn't let it go. And I thank you for that because we're a community up there, family. The reason I'm here this afternoon, this evening, is because I'd like to get that road back. Once Love's does build and I'm all for advancements and developing, I'm afraid the county's going to oversee our location and forget about us. I'm willing to take full responsibility for that road. I've been doing it for the last four years. I mow it, I fix a pot, holes in it, I buy my own co-mix. I've been doing it for the last four years. As a son of Tony Onzuris, the owner of that farm, and I operate it now, I would like to get that road back and start thinking about my family, my daughters, my neighbors. And that's pretty much why I'm here. I'd like to get full right back of that road and make it a private road. Because I'm looking at the future for when it starts coming through, building trucks, everything. That's my proposal. If you all would please just take that into consideration. That road is on my dad's land. And again, I'm fully willing to take full responsibility of that road. Like Ogden Road, Onzuris Road underneath those that have been abandoned or let go, I would like that road back to the family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Other public comments?
You guys have a good evening.
Well, before I leave, if there's anything that I need to fill out or a process I need to follow, besides just walking in here. My number is five seven five eight oh eight nine five seven one. And once again, my name is Joel Onzuris. My father is Tony, Antonio Onzuris, and Joel Yancey.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So are there other comments? Seeing none, we have a couple of agenda item changes. First, we're going to pull item 11. We received some additional information late yesterday afternoon. And so we're going to pull that and revisit that, and then we'll come back to the commission with a different update. The other item to help, we have a representative from Hobbs here. So we're going to move item 10 up in the agenda so that she can present that and then travel back to Hobbs while it's still alive. So we'll, we'll now hear the 2020 census report. I don't know if Jerry or Megan was going to present that. I think Jerry might get fired.
Yeah, that's Kyle.
Okay, there we go.
Good evening, guys.
Hello. And I believe Ms. Strong is doing some of the emergency management.
She's down with fire services right now, so.
So I will go ahead and start. Chairman Henry and Mr. Davis and commissioners, thank you all for putting us on the agenda today. My name is Kyle Marksteiner. I'm with the city of Carlsbad. I'll let my co, you want to introduce yourself or?
Megan Mooney, PIO for the city of Hobbs.
What you're, what you're looking at today is a, is a letter. This was a letter originally suggested by Mrs. Courier in discussions with Mayor Janeway and Mayor Cobb. The intention is to put together a unified front, letting members of the Permian Strategic Partnership know just how critical the census issue is and asking for our support to make sure that the census count is complete and accurate. I think we all here agree that Eddin Lee County's populations are considerably higher than the 2010 census indicated. The census's efforts are critical as data to determine state and federal funding. And it's also used to attract new companies, industries in the area. It's, it's an extremely important number that you have to kind of wage a war to convince somebody to look at a number other than that census number in some cases. So we're attempting to address the fact that we have thousands of workers from the oil and gas industry, living and sleeping in southeast New Mexico for majority of the time, who are not recognized as part of that official census count. That means a pull on the infrastructure and resources for our communities that we are not currently receiving adequate funding for. In other words, they come here, they, they wa, they take shower, they take five showers five days a week, they flush toilets five days a week, but their number doesn't count towards our total. And so that's, that's hurting us quite a bit. So what this letter to the PSP is, is asking for them to make that high on their priority list as, as they meet. We're not asking for any money to be diverted by PSP from other projects or for any reduction in resources, but the PSP does represent 20 major companies with a great deal of influence. So when it comes to making sure that the sense, the census commits its resources to making sure our population counts are fair, we believe that PSP's influence can represent a great deal of clout. We're talking about phone calls and just making sure, we're asking the PSP companies and, and the organization to just make sure that the census numbers are being done in a way that's, that's fair to southeast New Mexico. Ms. Mooney heads her community census committee and can she probably answer a few more questions? But again, all we're asking is for Chairman Henry acting on behalf of the county to sign, sign this copy of the letter. It's been signed by Mayor Janeway and Mayor Cobb so far. We will then pass on to other leaders in southeast New Mexico before delivering this letter on to Tracy Bentley with the Permian Strategic Partnership.
Again, Megan Mooney, Director of Communications and PIO for the city of Hobbs. So thank you for having me in your city and county. As you've already heard and know, the census data has a critical impact on the progress of a community. It is a reflection of a community for a decade, but its impact is felt for long after as state and federal governments base over $675 billion in funding on housing, infrastructure, education, roads, and so much more. It is also used to attract new businesses and industries to show that population sizes and demographics fit what they need in order to be successful. If you're reading between the lines here, we want more to target in Chick-fil-A. However, in order for census efforts to be fully effective, it is critical that we receive appropriate funding as well. These points are why it is so important for, for southeast New Mexico communities to come together on this funding request to the Permian Strategic Partnership. It's always a special thing when groups partner together for a positive impact and their chairwoman of PSP has already voiced the PSP's support of census efforts. Again, I thank you for having me in your beautiful, busy city and county. And I stand for any questions. And the city of Hobbs hopes for your partnership as always.
I just, first of all, want to say thank you for driving over and I hope we get you back before you hit too many crazy stones. But I fully support this letter. Actually got to speak to Tracy at the Mayor's Oil and Gas Summit, so fully support Mr. Chairman signing it on the commission's behalf.
Likewise, appreciate you coming. Appreciate Kyle trying to get this stuff put together as well. I think this is a, I think this is a good thing. Anything that we can do to help tie the PSP to our area and, and show them that we do support them and hopefully that is reciprocated, I think is important to do so. Amen.
Thank you for coming over both of you. And I think this is something that is needed in order to get an accurate count because you look around the county, we're overwhelmed with people that are transit, in other words, that go and come on the weekends and work here in the week and stuff. Thank you for coming over.
Likewise, I want to thank you for being here. I did have a question, kind of, do we have an idea as to what kind of methods we're going to use to enhance the census making?
Okay. So with our complete count committees, first step is establishing a complete count committee. It's so important that the Census Bureau actually creates a complete count committee map where they use those location pins to show different areas throughout the entire nation that have committees. In our area, you'll see there are blank spaces where they don't have complete count committees. But then over here in our southeast corner, we have location pins. So that's one critical point. You're estimated to have a much higher self-reporting, self-reporting data than any other, other areas that do not have such a committee. And that's because you have members of the community on your committee. So those members are receiving this information and this education, become knowledgeable of it, and then sharing it with other constituents. So you have people that so many people can relate to. So you have people that represent faith, faith, faith groups, faith-based, any kind of activist groups, chambers, schools, higher education. We even have CASA on our group and CYFD because that's something I wouldn't have thought of, is how difficult it's going to be to complete and completely and accurately count our foster children. So they've brought ideas to the table that, again, I wouldn't have thought of probably without them there. So they also are aware of those different areas and what are going to be the challenges to communicate with them and then the things that are going to be most successful. Something new with this, this new decade's census is online reporting. So that's never been done before. And it was, it was a concern of whether or not we were going to have older Americans that were going to not want to fill out their census when they've always been estimated to be the highest self-reporting demographic. But, so it's education on those levels. So we have individuals to, to represent our senior groups. So we have people that are going out to events, whether it is the Hispano Chambers Health Fair, it is a local church's Mardi Gras family fair, it is, if you had, it could be at a county fair, it could be at, you could have your own even census event. Our police department has events that we call PACT, P-A-C-T, Police and Community Together. And they're basically, they're just basically cookouts out at the park. And the police department cooks for people and they show up and everyone likes free food and you get to hang out with your police officers. So we're going to have events just like that for the census. And so it's to receive information on that. And we'll have tablets out there and Census Bureau workers there to help people fill out their census there on site. Other things, we're working with oil and gas industry members like Kyle mentioned, having them, well PSP, them making phone calls, pushing support. Also, I mean, of course, we want their funding, but getting the support in those different companies to push the census. I was having a, I don't want to say a company name or an individual's name or anything, but we were have, you know, just kind of spit firing some ideas of can you possibly give admin leave to someone? Like you get four or eight hours admin leave or a day, extra day off sometime for filling out your census at this safety meeting. They have presentations at safety meetings. We've actually created presentations for those exact things. And then we had it translated into Spanish. We have professional services agreement with the Hispano Chamber of Current Commerce. And their goal is to focus on reaching the Hispanic-speaking population. And so by doing these things, we're establishing trust with these individuals of our community. They are community leaders and that's why they're serving on this committee. So not only do they, they become knowledgeable of it, but they are to be that mouthpiece. We're going, we're working with a videographer on creating a commercial to be shown so that people see that and they receive information, they see people of our community on it, some postcard, a bunch of marketing materials, things like that, reaching the schools, you know, you teach kids something and you, you get it to them enough and they go home and make sure mom and dad know about what's going on. So those are a few things.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We've had this discussion before. Sorry you had to come back down, but, but I appreciate you making the trip. So I'm good with it.
She needs you to sign it before she leaves.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for staying on. I'll be sitting back there in the audience.
Southeast New Mexico is a big area for scavenger hunts.
It's a good way to meet people, I guess, right?
No, but we'll need to have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. If you'd please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we'll have you sign this at this time so she can.
Oh, sorry, Darling needs to sign it too, right?
The good thing about you guys signing it now, another good thing, is that now I get to go back to Lee County and get two more signatures on their channel this week.
Good deal.
Does that matter?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Be careful.
All right. With that, we'll, we'll move back to the top of our trading agenda. Item number one, approve the commission meeting minutes from September 17.
A time agenda.
Oh, we probably need to do.
gazebo.
The gazebo.
Okay, my fault. Scroll up, scroll down. All right. So we have a request to place a gazebo on the courthouse lawn. It's a donation to the county. And so.
Chairman Henry, commissioners. Put together this agenda request after having some meetings with Carlsbad Main Street. I guess probably here over the last few months, they've really gained some steam in an effort to donate Eddy County gazebo type structure to be placed on the courthouse lawn. Got a little picture there. It's a rough location. Nothing's really set in stone at this point. However, some background I should share is back in, I believe, 2015, July 2015 or around there, Eddy County had donated the big World War II cannon that was off of a ship. And that got relocated over to Veterans Park. And it was discussed during that meeting around that time that there would be something provided back to the county of value to, to take the place of, of that landmark, so to speak. And I think something good here's been developed, some more history with the courthouse. It used to be called a bandstand, but you know, back in 1916, there was actually one built on the courthouse lawn for about $70. I don't think we'll get one for $70 today, but it kind of ties, you know, the future, the present in with the past to this building. And I think it'll be, you know, a benefit to not only our piece of property there, but downtown in general, just to have a nice shaded seeded area, you know, with some green grass and trees and stuff like that. With that, I'll let Carla.
Yeah, well, if you, if you guys all want to donate $70 each, we can put it towards towards the gazebo. We have some pictures of it that I don't know if they got turned in to y'all, so.
I didn't have a PDF file of that.
Sorry, sorry. Do y'all want to just pass them down? And like, like Brian said, we've been working on this for, for years, have collected the funds, and we're ready to go on it. Donating concrete and the work, and it's going to be amazing.
Questions? Anyone have questions?
No. We, as the Main Street Board, have been working on this for four years. And we finally have the funds, so it's nice to see it happening. And we're hoping to have it finished before the light parade and the, the Christmas events. It's going to be lit and it will have lights on it all the time. It'll be decorated at Christmas and it'll be used pretty much for every event that Main Street has. It'll have electrical on every one of those posts so we can have bands and various other things. Carla has done a great job, as well as Larry Mitchell. He's the architect that's been helping with it. He's also the past president of the Main Street Board. And as Carla mentioned, we have the concrete being donated. And I don't know that that person wants me to mention their name, but I do want to say that our very own Commissioner McCutcheon is donating a lot of time to help us with the concrete so that we can get this thing set. And we appreciate that so much. Because without the community giving back, we wouldn't be able to, to do great things like this.
I think I support it, so. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people doing a lot of good out there. So we appreciate you rounding everybody up and appreciate all the help in the community, so.
We appreciate you.
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea. What are we making it out of? Did I miss that? Is it wood? Is it metal?
Oh, no, it'll be a metal structure. So very low maintenance. I believe the seating is, you know, concrete benches. And so there's really not a lot there to tear up.
It's kind of, that's great.
The way I understand the plan so far.
Great. Sounds good to me.
And it'll have enough electrical stuff that if we want to have AC/DC or somebody like, yeah, lay in there, we can do that. But y'all will have to.
I'm sure the city's got enough juice for that.
I think the county does.
I did want to say one more thing. I want to thank Brian and his department as well because Brian graciously has a little bit of extra money in his budget that he's going to help out with the electrical and make sure that it's done correctly. And that's huge. So thank you, Brian. And also Brian is on the oversight committee as well, so that nothing crazy gets done out there. And he's always, already gone over all the permitting and everything with the Main Street Board. He's keeping this in mind.
You're making sure there's no beer garden designed in the corner or anything like that?
The deed, the deed to the property is the challenge there. I don't, I don't have anything to say. I think it'd be a great beer garden, but.
How do we fix that?
Cass can help us with that.
I don't think we're going to be able to fix that.
All right, great. So do you want to make a motion?
I will make the motion that we approve to place a gazebo on the courthouse lawn.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
So now we'll move to the training portion of the agenda. My apologies. So we're looking to approve the commission meeting minutes from September 17, the special commission meeting minutes from September 25th, and the Pecard approval report for August 2019.
So for the commission meeting minutes for September 17, does anyone have anything to discuss? No? Look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes September 17.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special, the commission meeting minutes for September 17. Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
All right, how about the special commission meeting minutes for September 25?
Make a motion that we approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
abstain.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
abstain.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
All right, how about the purchase card approval report for August 2019? Anybody have questions? Concerns? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to approve purchase card approval report for August 2019.
I make a motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
They need to get home. Hurry. All right.
She turns to a pumpkin at 10, so.
9:45.
9:45, good.
Item number two, the treasures report for August 2019.
All right. Anyone have any questions, concerns, anything? All right, this one's an information one, so I think we're okay there.
August 2019 revenue report. Mr. Roberta.
Hi, Roberta. Evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. For the August 2019 revenue report, for gross receipts tax, we collected $1.6 million for the month of August, which as you know, is over our monthly target of 1.15 million. So currently, as we stand, we're about $750,000 over budget. I do have a report to pass out. I know, I believe Commissioner Henry had asked about gross receipts tax breakdown by industry. They used to produce, they're called RP80 reports online. When they transitioned from on-guard to the state website, there was a huge delay. So they're now available. I did condense the report quite a bit because it's pretty lengthy. But if these are any of interest to you, I can start providing them in the revenue report. If they're not, you know, just let me know and, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Roberta.
So for oil and gas production and equipments for the month of August, we collected $2.3 million, which again, our monthly target goal is about 1.5 million dollars. So as of August of 2019, we're roughly 1.9 million dollars over budget for oil and gas. Unless there's any other questions.
Any questions?
Nope, I like those numbers.
Maybe I just missed it on here. Is oil and gas included under mining? 26% is it?
Yes, that's, that's what, yes.
That's, okay, I'm sorry.
That's why it holds the highest percentage. I think it's 26%.
26%. Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I was reading, so I apologize. I'm good.
Gentlemen, anything? Got it? We updated it, so. Commissioner Wood, anything?
All right, then.
We need to make a motion on that? Make a motion to, or I guess we'll entertain a motion to approve August 2019 revenue report?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay, sit still. Next item is budget versus actual for 20, August 2019.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, for the budget versus actual for August 2019, we should be roughly about 17% collection and expense. The county overall, we're at 33% collected and 23.65 of our expenses. Now again, majority of that, like I said, last month is the transfers because we have about 15 million, a little over 15 million dollars in transfers. So that accounts for both your revenue and expense side. For the general fund, we're right on target at 17% revenue collected for general fund. For expenses, we're quite a bit over at 35%. But again, that's because general funds hold the majority of that transfer of 15 million dollars. So that was all transferred at the beginning of July. So it takes a few months for that to, to equal out. For the road departments, just really quickly, they have collected over 86% of their revenue. But again, most of their revenue are transfers in from the general fund. And they stand at a roughly 8%. their revenue are transfers in from the general fund. And they stand at a roughly 8% expensed. So, they're quite a bit under their 17%.
Questions? Questions, gentlemen? Saying none. We'll entertain a motion to approve Budget versus Actuals, August 2019?
So moved. Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay. Item five is Discussion, Direction, and Possible on the fiscal year 2018-2019 surplus. Mr. Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as directed by Commissioner Henry, we did bring the surplus back for discussion and direction. So, as you recall, the 2018-19, we did end the fiscal year in general fund with the 16.2 million dollar surplus. Of that surplus, depending on how the commission would like to handle that, we did obviously approve a deficit budget of 9.5 million dollars. If you remember, we had ending the fiscal year about 47 million dollars in general fund. So, if you could, you could take that full 16 million dollars as the surplus, and you would still be left with about 38.2 million dollars, in theory, if you were to expense everything and collect everything that you had budgeted for. Or, you could still cover your deficits, and you would, in theory, end up with your 47 million dollars at the end of the year. Either way, 47 million, 38 million, they're both good numbers. Al and I had discussed some of our suggestions on what to do with it. And we do suggest moving, at minimum, the 6.7 million dollars to the capital improvement fund for countywide capital purchases. What this also does is, if you do not intend to spend it right away, and say you plan to spend it next year on capital purchases, what this does, it helps recover your deficit budget for next year, if you will. Because, as you know, if you budget 100 million dollars in revenue, you need 100 million dollars in expenses to have a balanced budget. So, if we have 6.7 million dollars deficit budget next year, you can transfer that money back over to general fund, and that will count as a revenue source. So, instead of having a deficit budget, you now have a revenue source, and you can have a balanced budget. So, it can kind of do two things if you would like it to. Or, if you move it to the capital improvement fund, you are still able, because it's a committed fund, you are still able to recommit those funds back over to general fund if you do wish so later on in the fiscal year. But, it physically takes that cash out of general fund and sticks it in another special revenue fund.
Questions or doubts?
I definitely want to cover our deficit. I know Commissioner Carlson and I both think we're gonna have quite the overreach, but I definitely would like to cover our deficit. And then, I had talked to Roberta last week, and I'm definitely okay with moving it into the capital improvement fund. I think that gives us the best opportunity to spend that money the way that we will probably want to spend it.
You mentioned you and Al had discussed this. Is this your suggestion, and Alice is also your suggestion, to do this with this money?
Yes, sir. I think what we were wanting to do is make sure that, depending on what you decide on the deficit portion, having money in the capital improvement fund, that could be earmarked for specific tasks, activities, purchases. As Roberta said, it could be recommitted and come in as a revenue stream to help supplement those. So, what we didn't want to do is create a land rush from the different groups and departments, but rather, look at a prioritized opportunity list, and then get support for those, and then bring those back and say, "These are the ones we recommend." And we would pull that back out of the capital improvement fund with the commission's endorsement to do so. So, that would give us some structure and control around how those monies got used.
Okay. Putting it in the capital improvement fund, will we still be able to pull out, as we have discussed, to leverage our money, whether it's grant matching or something like that? Can we still pull it out for those purposes?
Yes, it just has to come back before the board to recommit.
Okay, alright.
I'm okay, as long as we, you know, cover the deficit and put it into the capital improvement plan. I'm okay with it.
I, well, I mean, obviously, we have a budgeted deficit. But, I also think that we understated our revenue, budgeted the deficit. So, it's six of one, or half a dozen of the other. I mean, when we cover that budget, it's just gonna make my surplus a year greater. Then I gotta tell you that I think that we talked about it in Finance Committee, is that I want to revisit the budget at the end of six months, because a budget is just a roadmap. And we need to look at our roadmap and see if there's a better route when we do that. So, that's gonna be a big push of mine. So, basically, we can cover the budget. I have no problem with doing that. Putting it in the capital outlay fund, I have no problem with doing that either, because then we can redirect it as we see fit. And we can also, at the time we have this major budget surplus, we can redirect it to. So, no problem.
No, I think this is great. I'm just super excited. I don't have a list of things to spend it on today. Because I think that's what we've done. I've never, I've never thought that was a great plan. Just like your chiller, you know?[1024.46][1024.46](laughter) I'm sure he's got plenty of stuff that's gonna break at some point or something. So, no, it's really, I'm excited to see this. I think y'all have come up with a great plan. I really appreciate the way we've done it. So, I'm all in favor of this.
To the motion or objection.
Approve.
Discussion and direction.
There is a possible vote. So, if everyone's in consensus, I do ask for a vote so we can move that money.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, in over my head right here, you gotta figure it out there. Okay, that we commit the surp, oh darn it. Okay. That we cover, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we cover our budget deficit with the 9 million and change, and move the rest of the remaining 6 million to the capital improvement fund.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Good job. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
One last item, for Mr. Roberta here. Approve or disapprove having Roberta Smith, Finance Director, to be on the NACO Finance Pensions and Intergovernment Affairs Steering Committee?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, back in August, I had expressed.[1122.46][1122.46](laughter)
Like $12 in the kitty.[1125.22][1125.22](laughter)
I had expressed some interest in being part of this NACO Steering Committee. And then, in September, I did receive an email notifying me that I was appointed to the committee. However, I did put in here before accepting this position, I don't know if there's an acceptance or not acceptance. We did already have a first conference call to just kind of go over what's gonna be happening for this year. But, I did want to bring it in front of the board to ask your permission, essentially, because two expectations of this would be traveling to Washington DC at the end of February, and then also in July to Florida. Now, on the other side of that, too, I did ask in the conference call, those are expectations, they're not requirements. So, if you guys are not okay with that, I would still ask that I could still be on the committee to still be involved in the monthly conference calls, as well as, they're gonna be bringing surveys for us to vote on, for to take legislative priorities to the NACO to be voted on, so.
No, I fully support Roberta being on this committee. I think it's great. And it just gives us one more voice at that level. Thank you for volunteering to do that.
Ready for you want to do it?
Yeah?
I think it's an honor, and I support you in it.
Thank you.
I think it's great.
That was easy.
Thank you.
You want a motion on that? That make you feel better?
Um, yes, it does say approve, disapprove, so sure.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Ready for this one? Will we approve Roberta, the Finance Director, to be on the NACO Finance Pensions and Intergovernment Affairs Steering Committee?
That's fantastic. Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
I know this is really hard, sure. But, when you're kind of a little more confident, there's a.
Yeah, just do it, yeah.
Coaching, I like that. Yeah, we know which way it's going.
Could go the other way on this one, even.
Commissioners, item seven, approve or disapprove on indigent burial.
So, I am needing approval for one indigent burial. This one is out of Roswell Anderson Bethany Funeral Home. We're reimbursing them for service on somebody that was Eddie County resident.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve one indigent burial to be paid to Anderson Bethany Funeral Home.
Second.
Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
We need to come up with questions, because I know this is your favorite thing to do.[1315.22][1315.22](laughter) Be ready next time. We're gonna come up with something, alright?
I know.
Next time you have something on the agenda, just be ready for it.[1323.42][1323.42](laughter) Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She's gonna call in sick.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know what questions you could.
Turn red each time.
Yeah, there's really no.
I don't know what good questions you could ask to this. I mean.
Are they dead?
Yeah.
How dead are they?
Alright. Item number eight, purchase of copier for the clerk's office.
Because this was over the amount of $5,000, which the last two copiers we bought were under 5,000, so we didn't have to ask for money. And we're not asking for money, we're just asking for your approval, because this will come out of our Clerk's Recording and Filing Fund, which we have plenty of money in, so it's not coming out of the general fund. But, it had to come before the commission, because it wasn't in the budget.
I have a copy machine. We have several, but the one we're replacing is deceased. Indigent. It's indigent.
It's indigent.
So, you put them, maybe combine them?
No.
One gone?
Well, I don't care what they.
Have any questions or anything? I'm sorry. Gentlemen?
We're addressing.
Will it staple?
We don't need it to staple.
But, Dad, we gotta have one staples.
No, not this one. We're against staples. We have to scan too many things over.
Alright. Entertain a motion to approve the purchase copier for clerk's office?
I'll make the motion.
You're putting too much pressure on each one.
Second, man, I thought I was gonna do that one, too.
We have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Item nine is similar, copy and fax machine for the Records Division and the Sheriff's Office.
Good evening. We didn't know it was gonna break. It broke, didn't budget for it. So, if you would approve us buying another one, that'd be great. We kind of need it.
Now, you're indigent as well?
I guess so.
Do you want to ask if it's staples? It's important, too.
Will it staple?
I think it does.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the copy fax machine for the Records Division of the Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Motion of multiple seconds. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, glad you came to see us. So, just as a question, perhaps for a future meeting and discussion, these kinds of items, with the threshold that exists, is that something that the Commissioners wish to continue to entertain, or we want to revisit that threshold at some point? And, just a thought.
Revisit the threshold.
How do we do that? You just say revisit it on a later agenda?
We need to have to do it.
Yeah, let's do that.
So, I'll take a note, and we'll bring it forward on a subsequent commission agenda.
That'd be great.
Thank you. We've addressed item 10 and 11, and so, we'll proceed to County Road, 774 Road Runner Road Construction, final payment. Mr. Burns.
Hi, Jason.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this invoice was brought to Public Works' attention. Apparently, there had been some discrepancies regarding this on a previous project that had never been settled. Public Works has gone and confirmed that the work was completed and requests that this be approved, to be paid. The reason is before you tonight is because it is relatively old, and needed to be approved, as there's not an open PO for it.
Questions?
I just, what's the background on the reason that it was overlooked? Do you know?
So, there was a discrepancy in the quantities that were never quite settled for this. And this is what, we did go out and confirm that the work was completed to what they're invoicing, and have discussed with the contractor, and have agreed to what they're asking for.
Thank you.
You and I discussed the matter, you know, how I feel about it. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to approve it and get them paid. I am confident this isn't gonna happen again. And I know it's not your fault, and you're trying to clean up the mess. So, I'm good. Let's move on from this and go forward.
I have no questions. Look for a motion, or entertain a motion to approve CR 774 Road Runner Road Construction, final pay application number 13.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
abstain.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Alright. Item 13 is Public Works, District 2 Road Manager Overhired.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're bringing this before you tonight. We have a employee that's going to be out on extended leave. And we'd like to request your approval to overhire his position, so that we don't have a lapse in leadership in our North Road Department.
I'm fine.
Good.
Commissioner Wood?
I'm good with it.
Commissioner?
I'm good.
Alright, as well. So, we'll look to, for a motion to approve Public Works, District 2 Road Manager Overhire.
So moved. Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay. Item 14 is, refers to a letter that I prepared at the commission's request to begin discussion with the City of Artesia and the City of Carlsbad, related to getting a public and government affairs person in place to do some lobbying, do some engagement. We put that letter together, and it's here. We put that letter together and it's here. It describes what I took to be the initial breakdown of that cost. I may not have gotten that completely right, but again, this is just a letter to begin that dialogue. The letter also contains scope, activities and different things that we could begin to talk to the mayor of Artesia and the mayor of Carlsbad. I've had a couple of different conversations with Mayor Janeway and Mike Hernandez, the city administrator. They saw this on the agenda and they had thought we were meeting this morning. I told them, once we have that, then I'll, I'll come with the letter and personally start that dialogue and engagement, so. If this meets your intents, then we can get that approved and move forward. If we need to modify it, we can do that, whatever, at your direction.
I like the, I like the position, I think it's much needed, as has been stated, our fight is with Santa Fe. And if we can create some county cohesion with the two major cities in the county, I think this is a, I think this is a good, needed position and we can have a voice, a strong voice, and somebody that knows when Eddie County is there in Santa Fe and somebody's got our best interest in mind.
Commissioner Wood?
I talked to Mayor Miller two days ago, and I think he's in support of it. He had gotten the letter, but he hadn't fully looked it over, but he may still have some questions about it, so. But I think he's going to be good with it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm good with it. I think what's, like Commissioner McCutcheon said, we need somebody representing us in Santa Fe at different committee hearings and those, I just think it's to our advantage to have that type of person. I've seen it happen time and time again when I was with the associated contractors. It just makes a big difference when you're trying to push an idea or an issue through the different committees and stuff. It makes it well worth its money.
I'm very much in support, I've talked to, as Commissioner Wood said, the mayors and some council members, and I think they're more interested than I thought. I've always said, I thought for the last two years, our fights with Santa Fe, we all see Washington's not interested in doing anything important, so we need to focus on our state and make sure that we're doing everything we can, so. I think this is great, I'm really excited that we're doing it with the cities. I think that's been a big push for this board to try to bring these groups together in same interests. I think this does that beautifully, so really excited to start working with these groups and on one mission. That's it, that's all I got? We have a, I guess we need to take a motion, do we have a motion for it?
I have a motion that we support the letter that our county manager has written to Artesia Mayor and Carlsbad Administrator regarding a memorandum of understanding for a public and governmental affairs director.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. So the next step in that process then was item 15, which was to create a position for which we could carry out that effort. And so I've worked with our HR department, Mr. Roxanne, and we've created a job description and a position, and that's what item 15 represents, is the opportunity to create that position. The position contains the same job description that's in the letter with some additional scope.
I don't, I think everything was said about this position when we were speaking about the letter, but it's definitely a much-needed position. We need to have a larger voice in Santa Fe.
No questions.
Commissioner? I think I said it earlier, so we're all good, looking for a motion to approve Public and Government Affairs Director job description?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay. Item 16 is, we're creating the position that came out of our last commission meeting discussion for the Community Administrative Services Director. We created the job description, we're setting up the position to do so as per the discussion that we'd had, so. Looking to get that position approved.
Any questions, Commissioner?
I don't have any, thank you.
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood, Commissioner? I have none as well. Looking for a motion to approve the Community Administrative Service Director job description?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 17 is Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda. See the items listed there.
Does anyone have anything they need to pull?
No, sir.
Any items to pull? No? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to approve Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
All right. That takes us to item obtained, item 18, which is Department Updates. I got to stew this easy. So first we'll hear from the Public Works Department, Mr. Burns.
Welcome back.
Chairman, Commissioners. So, we get our updates this week, I've tried to condense our schedule so it's a little more legible this time around. You're seeing the schedule for only about the past month, from September 9th through October 15th. From the last time, you can see we had several issues that were to be completed, but this is only our condensed view that, and that's what we'll kind of do, is keep your rolling schedule of what we have done and what we're going to be doing. In the North Department, we completed 206, the shoulder maintenance, all the way from the north to the south, and we are currently on County Road 217. They started that on the 17th and they're about 17 or 70% complete. That's our crew one and two. They'll then be moving to County Road 222. With this current rain that we're getting, we have a lot of our crews that are out doing road closures, and we've also directed them that since they can't be doing the shoulder maintenance, that they're going to be out blading roads as they can, so. Our Cattle Guard crew is still doing various potholes, patching, mowing and assisting our South crew. So we'll keep, North crew's doing a really good job of keeping those going.
So one item to mention is your color scheme, red, the dark red is complete.
Right.
And...
And you can see, if it's highlighted in with red, that's the percent complete of it. For example, on this County Road 217, you see how the dark red only goes up through a portion of that cell? That's the percent complete we have, and then blue's on schedule and the light red is from our planned schedule behind schedule. So, but the dark red is completed and done, so. Our South Department, we, up until yesterday, we had our one crew working on King Road Subgrade Prep, getting it ready to chip seal, and then we had our crew or two that was working on Fiesta Potholes. They finished that and then they've also moved to King Road to, we were planning on chip sealing that today with our crews as our, to get ready for next year so that we can adequately plan and make sure all our equipment is where it needs to be, and we got rained out today. So we have them also checking roads and we've sent them out to blade roads with the Lord's Water. So we'll be moving forward with that. We also have finished Neumeyer and we finished Onseris here recently too. Cattle Guard crew, same deal, they've had several cattle guard cleanouts out on McDonald Road and Twin Wells, wagon wheel potholes, Harkness Road Potholes, they've been doing a lot of potholing, patching, and we're keeping them really busy, also off of our report, our issue reporter, and that's basically what we're doing, is rolling those in there and making lists of what we need to do and be completed. We'll go to the projects that we currently have ongoing. Derrick Road was completed on the 27th of last week with the second penetration of chip seal. We are looking at fog sealing that road and striping it to be complete with that one. Black River Village is under, is in progress of engineering right now. We should expect that back here in a couple of weeks for our first review, and like we'd said before, we're looking to hopefully bid that and have it awarded by the first of the year and under construction right after the first of the year. On Cirrus Road, we are, been in contact with the contractor, we're awarded that to. They're going to start the chip seal on that road next week pending weather cooperation. Musketeel, we've also talked to the contractor that we have awarded that to, they're going to start that one next week. They were going to start it this week, but saw the incoming weather and pushed that one back to schedule so that they didn't open that road up and have to push back on it. The road assessment, we have ordered that one and we've had our first call with them. They are on process and on schedule to complete that by the end of the year, to present that. I visited with Mr. Davis and we have a good plan to move forward with that and utilize that tool that we're going to have. Cherry Road, we have our, an engineering agreement to get us the preliminary engineering estimate on that one, and once we have that in our hands and awarded, we will get an MOU from the city to move forward with that one. Same thing on Red and Campbell Road, we have contracted with an engineer to give us a preliminary report on an engineering estimate to partner with Lee County. And as soon as we get that engineering estimate, we'll sit down and discuss what's in the... Discussion we've had with Lee County is they'll do what's theirs and we'll do what's ours, but it'll be good to get it all done at once, so we'll bring that MOU back before you. North 26th Street, we have the, an engineer looking at that one as well to give us a road section and a, within the right of ways, to be able to improve that road. Might try to steer some grant funding over at that one and look at what we can do there. We completed some maintenance issues on Mexico 31. Eddie County Road Sections, we are in the process of working and we've discussed this with Mr. Davis of putting together, kind of like the state has, several levels of roads that we can bring in with our assessment and put good, hard engineering numbers and common sense to what level of a road that we need in certain places. All the way from a Caliche rural localized road to an urban arterial, that'll be a pavement section under a good base course. So we're going to bring those to you and present them to you, for your comments and review. We also have recently purchased road counters in the Public Works Department and have assigned our sign department to be putting those out on a strategic plan of roads so that we can actually get some accurate counts of the level of services of these roads and plug that into our road sections, and we know how much these roads are actually getting used and the traffic that's going over. And then on the bottom of that, we have FEMA projects, which we're going to talk about a little later, but we will have a, get those on there eventually as we move forward with FEMA.
So a lot of the things that we talked about in this last portion here are steps that will help us be prepared for kind of a unit cost approach that you can go to multiple vendors with the same consistent, you know, we've made a determination that roads meet this threshold criteria based on counts, based on road construction, and this is what we're going to build to, so it should streamline the process and make it pretty apparent and transparent on what, why and where, where those priorities fit in there. So it's, it's a good process and it should help streamline the whole effort.
Yes, sir.
At the landfill, we have several things going on. We have a proposal for the tire shredder that we're going to present to the Solid Waste Committee on the 9th. We're starting a deal with a Sandfield, Sandpoint Landfill Plan that's going to incorporate the tracking info. One thing that we'd like to come present to the Solid Waste Committee and the Commission is the amount of solid waste that we're intaking versus what is designed to intake so that we can budget and plan appropriately for the expansion of the landfill. Our Sales Six and our East Land Acquisition are moving forward as they're supposed to be with our engineers. We're also going to be bringing to you at the next commission meeting a grappler truck acquisition so that we can present to you an illegal dumping plan. The one thing I would like to highlight on this one is the trash issue reporter, and I don't know, we could come up with a more catchy title for that, but we do have a link on the Sandpoint Landfill page right now that people can go on and report sites of illegal dumping and it is operational. They go through the Eddie County webpage to the landfill page and there is a link right there on the Sandpoint page that takes them directly to where they can report illegal dumping. And we will get that on a, just like we're doing with the road issue reporter. We're going to track those the exact same way and get those addressed. We're reviewing some operations at the local hills station to improve and optimize those. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the Sandpoint Landfill Plan and the Illegal Dumping Plan, that we have some goals, and we'd like to come present those to you here as we work on those goals and have some deals that would really improve our dumping. One thing I would like to also present that we're going to do here immediately is we are going to have tire collection stations at all of our convenience and collection points around the county so that anywhere you can get in, if you have tires or anything like that, bring them and we'll take care of them. With that, that concludes my update and I will...
We can ask questions here, can't we?
Yes.
That's an update.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I didn't mean to step in front of you, Susan.
I was just going to say thank you, I, again, we appreciate these, but I just wanted to say, you know how excited Commissioner Carlson gets about roads? That's how I feel, that's how I feel about this landfill report, so. I just want you to know that, Ernie. All right, sorry.
Do any of the typical road sections that you're designing include the shredded tire material?
No, but we can add those to them.
Okay.
So... Several ways to repair and fix roads. We will keep that in there with the tile material because I know we're wanting to use that in certain locations, and we can definitely add that in there as a, what we're trying to do is update our current procedures and policies within Public Works and with our repairs. The sections, like Mr. Davis pointed out, is a way to, okay, we have this many, this much traffic on the road, needs to be at this speed, this is what it should be at. Now, the shredded tire proposal and the chip seal and the fog seal are levels of repair that can extend the life of it.
Okay.
So that is something that we will be bringing to you, but the section, yes and no.
Okay, so, well, I mean, and you know where I'm going with that. We just don't want a big pile of stuff out there, if we're shredding this thing up, we've got to figure out a paper for this, so we might as well create our own market for the unmarketable shredded tires.
Yes, sir.
And use those in, use those the way we can.
That would be a great repair for some of these to extend their level of service for their lifespan, so.
How would you bind that together, Jason? Just shoot an oil on it?
It's essentially what the tires are doing is it's replacing some of the fine aggregate in the, in the oil and it, instead of putting the fines and your sand in it, that'd be your tire mix. your tire mix. So, it'd come just out like a slurry, just like we went and looked at that deal. But the, the key to the tires and using what we have is getting the correct machine in here that will grind them up into a fine enough aggregate that we can actually utilize them.
That, that was gonna be my question, can you get it fine enough to replace?
We're gonna, we're gonna present that to you when we, with here's the, here's the machine that we would need to get them to that, that grade and, um, be able to do that.
And be cost effective?
Yes, sir. If, if, if possible. So, we're, we're looking into that and trying to get some more solid numbers to bring that to you and present to you. So, we know how much the machine will cost. We're just trying to get the other side of that now to, if we can pay for it with that way.
I wonder what would happen if you did that and then, and then, uh, shot an emulsifier to oil it?
I've got several roads we can experiment on.
Trade out on the landfill.
Yeah. So, but that is something we can look into and we'll, we'll bring that back to you to present.
And, and so I'm being clear, I, I'm not wanting to spend a pile of money just to get rid of tires. If it is cost effective, that's where I'd like to go. And, and that's what I thought we were trying to do is just make sure that we're good from top to bottom while we're looking at these things, make sure, while we're looking at the, at the tire shredding machine to see if we can do something with the...
And that's what we're gonna present to you.
Yeah.
The balance sheet of it, here's how much the machine's gonna cost to lease it or to buy it versus how much we think it's gonna cost, or the operating cost to, how much we think we could save with it or benefit from it.
Sometimes, sometimes, uh, going green costs more money than, than it's actually worth.
But, but actually if we can replace, I like the idea of, of replacing the fines if we can get it, if we can get it fine enough.
Right.
I don't know how fine.
That's what we're researching to see if we can...
The grinder can get it, but if it's cost effective, uh, then not only do you, not only, you know, you can create a pretty wearable, uh, surface.
Yes, sir.
If you use the rubber and it's bound together. That, that's my only concern is making it bind.
Yes, sir.
And that's the reason why I was wondering about like an emulsifier or something.
We're, we're looking into that and we'll bring you those solutions, answers.
Commissioner Wood? I don't want to let you think. I just appreciate it.
Oh, I have one more question. Uh, you mentioned the websites and the icons and, uh, how are we looking as far as our little icons on roads and what's being done with that information?
Um, I apologize I didn't bring you that updated list tonight. Last time it was pretty long, um, and I can continue to bring that up if you'd like. We are still tracking, um, all the issues that were being reported. And, uh, what they're doing is last time you'd actually see we have a few sections down here at the bottom. And as we get those, they're reported to the appropriate manager and then they're adding them into the schedule as, as they work in. And you'll see that's basically what our Cattle Guard and Trucking Crew are doing is they're going through and, and taking care of these as we get them in and just, so yes, we are addressing them and, uh, as they come in as we can. But like the, the road blading, we take those and we make a list of them of what we need to do. And then when we get the, the Lord's Water, we go out and use it and, and get them done all at once and, uh...
So, one of the items we were looking at was how, how can we provide a feedback loop to the community and, and make it visible? And one, one of the options we talked about was a simplified view of the, the pothole repair or the blade, right? So, you see that Gantt chart in a readable format that's not too detailed, but you could go to that website and say, "Oh, yeah, here it is." And so that would help that, close that feedback loop for, for those folks that had put, and we, we put some information on the website. Hey, have you, have you made a, did you report an issue? Check the, check the feedback loop over here. So, something we can talk with, with, uh, our IT folks and with Jerry and how, how to do that simply. So, that it's easy to maintain and you're not spending a huge time uploading stuff.
To make our website effective, we're gonna have to have that feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Because a lot of times the public thinks that, that, okay, you set that in there and I report something, I get no feedback.
Right.
And nothing's being done. And I like, I'd like that.
Yes, sir.
What about once it's completed? Are we kicking anything back or are they putting it in with an email? I mean, do we know who they are or...
We are asking for their, uh, optional contact info. And, uh, really what we're doing with that is we're trying to go, make sure we address this specific concern. Um, we try to call them back as we can, but we're, uh, I, I, I do agree with Mr. Davis that the online deal would really be a good complete loop on it to let them go check and make sure that we've got it done.
I think that's actual feedback. Just something to let them know that it's not a black hole.
That it, that we are here and there. Yes, sir. I agree.
Jerry?
Thank you.
Fire Service Department, Mr. Mack?
Hey, Josh.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I had a meeting with the county manager last week. We've added, uh, Fire Service for Department Updates so we can, we'll have some reports to bring to you at each commission meeting. Um, wanted to go ahead and update you guys that the power DMS that you voted on last meeting is in. We've been sending out notices to everyone and we're trying to get all the policies uploaded and the policy committee is actively working on those items. Um, also working with CAS to secure some land up at the Sheriff's Posse for a proposed La Herta Station Three to help with coverage on that side of the county. And also we're looking at putting a first aid area in that station to help with the rodeos so that we don't necessarily always have to transport them to the hospital. They can be evaluated over there and then released if needed. Um, we've had a lot of rain. Everything is primed up. We actually had a meeting this afternoon, county manager, myself, Jennifer and, uh, Jason. We do have quite a few roads closed. We're working with Jerry to make sure that the public stays informed of everything going on. We do have some swift water teams across the state from San Juan County, Dona Anna County and Bernaleo County area that are all on standby. Um, just in case we get anything going, we have been out evaluating. They're expecting more rain about ten-thirty tonight and then some more at midnight. We're looking at the next two to three days. So, we do have a warning out for the pick is to reach about fourteen feet, which twelve point five is what it holds. So, if that happens, we're trying to work with the cities, coordinate. Um, I've had multiple conference calls with Chief Hope and Chief Lopez from Artisia and Carlsbad and everybody's been doing good. We did have four swift water rescues last night. Everybody was pulled out safely, so, um, it's just been a little crazy.
So, so we have the EOC. Um, we, we initiated, um, operations in there for part of the, the staff to monitor weather conditions and flow levels in the specific, um, creeks and, and ravines as indicators for warning of what's to come. So, and we've talked about getting the, um, National Weather Service to give us a regular update. Um, I think we're looking at for our swatches now, maybe as much as hourly depending on how it goes. So, the, the, the real question we've been looking at is how much moisture will come? The, the system looks like it's still pumping. Moisture is really from the Gulf Coast, but it's being kicked up because of the remnant of the tropical storm off the coast of Mexico, so. Um, but we're, we've reached out. Jennifer's done a good job. She's had contact with state. We've got all of the, the folks there, Sheriff's Office is, is, uh, Lieutenant, uh, Lynn has been there. So, and then we've had, uh, as Josh mentioned, you know, the, uh, chiefs from the cities involved, uh, so everybody's ready depending on what the weather does and, and we're using the elements within the EOC at this time, so.
And just so you all know, we are seeing some things that they saw back in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, so we're trying to stay ahead of the game so that we don't have to call in helicopters and all those additional things. We wanna get the people out ahead of time, so we'll keep you updated via email and if anything serious breaks out, I'll be calling you or the county manager to let you all know. Oh, one last thing, sorry. The communication towers. My committee has finished their review. We will be having a presentation Monday night, the fourteenth, at the Fire Board Meeting at the Fire Operations Center. Um, it's the night before commission, so I can have Motorola do the presentation that night and then come here Tuesday morning. Or if we give gay enough notice, is this enough notice? She may hate me. If she throws anything, let me know. Um, I thought that we could have the commission come out to hear the presentation. Um, obviously we'd have to put out a meeting notice for a quorum. So, if that's something that you feel, Mr. Chairman, that we wanna do, um, it'd be an option, but the two options that they've come up with will be presented that night. We have reached out to the cities and other county departments to have a representative there to hear what the plans are. So, they found some price cuts and long-term planning, um, solutions to us not to have the cost for the duration for a long period of time, so.
We can discuss that and, and ask, I don't know how this public works. We haven't really had it before, so.
You, you could not go to a meeting and then discuss at the meeting, I mean, at this meeting?
Well, I, I've got a question about this whole thing is, is do we need to be there? I mean, you've got a committee put together. I'm assuming Artisia, Rita and all them are gonna be at this meeting. The Sheriff's Office, I would hope, would be at this meeting.
They're gonna be there.
And I mean, though, y'all are experts. I have no idea. My, my knowledge is push the button and it needs to work. I, I mean, I'll be honest with you and I wanna make sure it works for a really long time. I don't wanna change it in three years, that button doesn't work anymore, so.
But that's, that's what I want, the opportunity to be there for anybody that wants to gain more knowledge on it. And then I just need to know if we want to have them here at the meeting to give that to you guys, which I mean, in fifteen minutes is like a really short crash course. We're having an hour long from six to seven there. Just if there's gonna be a quorum, we need to know ahead of time, so.
Sure. You have a question?
I kinda feel like we have representatives that, two commissioners that sit on that board and the county manager as well as other county representatives. And I feel like they should, they could be able to come back and report to us their feelings and findings rather than having a second presentation, but that's just my feeling.
So, we will, we'll have a recommendation for you.
I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
I'm, I'd need a lot more than fifteen minutes or an hour to teach me anything about radios. I don't really, I'll probably be at the Fire Board Meeting anyway that night. That's gonna be in Artisia, correct?
It'll be down here.
What's gonna be here this time?
The fire ops.
Okay. So, yeah. John will drive this time.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, I'll be there, but, you know, I'm like John. It's better work.
Sir.
I don't know.
I mean, I don't, I, I, I trust that y'all are experts. I'm not, so.
I have a question, but it's not on the, the Fire Board. It's on, uh, our loving...
Yes, sir. I'm waiting for, waiting for the mayor, the mayor to be able to get everything coordinated on his side and give us a date and a time so that we can sit down. My objective is November first to have some sort of solution to present to both boards.
So, when are we gonna have a committee meeting?
It should be in the next week or so. I'm just waiting for him to get back to me on a good date and time.
Okay.
I just wanna make a correction. The floods were thirteen and fourteen and Goliath was fifteen.
Oh, okay.
I lived it.
Alright. I wasn't here, so I rely on everybody else to call me.
I'll tell you dates if you would like. In fact, I told Jason last night, I better get out and find my rain boots because I might have to wear them again.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. ... Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Josh.
Item nineteen is the travel request consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the travel request consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Henry.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Yes. Item twenty is emergency business. Don't know that we have any. Item twenty-one, legislative update. Don't know that we have any. Legislative update?
I don't have a legislative update, but I do have a department head.
Okay, it's your turn yet.
I have a legislator right there.
You can become a legislator, though.
I'm excited.
Alright. No legislative update. We now have item twenty-two, legislators, elected officials and county department heads.
I can go first.
Nicely played, gentlemen. Nicely played. Sit in the front, get first tax, sit in the back, come later.
As you know, we got the rates approved last, that last meeting and they were late getting in, so they allowed us to get our certification back to property tax fifteen days later. But actually Rhonda finished the certification today and so it hit, it hit property tax already, so they've gotten that. Um, we took three days to prepare the tax roll, which certification comes right after that. Same numbers, um, the tax roll then, the whole format went to the treasurer's office. So, they do have all their numbers now, all their values and so she'll be, uh, Lori has all that information, so your tax bills will be printed soon. Everybody's happy for it, right? Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Tax bills in the mail.
In the mail.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Couldn't resist, sorry.
Well, sorry, I did, I did myself. I'm bad at hearing in the right ear and so I just...
No, Chairman Henry, Commissioners, I just wanna make an announcement. For approximately three weeks, um, um, I've had my maintenance manager position filled. We hired from within. A man by the name of Steve Krollkeesman with the county since twenty-fifteen. Got him promoted into that position. Um, everything's good so far. The team was already familiar with him, so we're good. And so I just wanna announce, express my appreciation and gratitude to this commission for, for, you know, creating, allowing me to create that position and fill it. Um, and just tell you, you know, it's gonna put us in a good position to, uh, be more effective, uh, with the limited resources we do have and it's already, you know, paying dividends as far as I can see it. So, looking forward to, to getting that information back to you guys and, and kind of, you know, not only telling you, but kinda showing you how, how we're doing better with this person. So, I said, it's just appreciation and gratitude. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Tomorrow by two o'clock, we're gonna have a new website, um, migrating with the company we are with is City Plus. And after you've had it four years, they do a free redesign. So, we're just completing that. Um, and we have, uh, looked at what the interest of the public is and highlighted those things on, like with bullets and so that, um, it's all right there and it's not confusing. So, look for it tomorrow afternoon, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, man. It's a rush.
Rushing up front.
I just have a few quick things. I don't, I think they might've went under legislative stuff, but I didn't put them on the agenda, so. There was three items, uh, that came down from the legislation that affects our grocery receipts tax. House Bill Six was passed and it came effect of July twenty-nineteen and we saw it on our September distribution. It was in regards to internet sales. And so what they did is they stuck a lump sum of money, nine million dollars for counties. And based on the twenty-ten census, um, they distributed those monies out appropriately monthly. So, the county will be getting around two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars this fiscal year for those internet sales. It's a lump sum that comes monthly. It's about nineteen thousand dollars a month. So, that is an additional new revenue source for the county we have created. Not we've created, but you will see, um, in the revenue reports. Uh, the other one, I don't know what house bill it was, um, the clerk's office actually gave us this information. We never received it in finance, but, um, the administrative fees for grocery receipts tax are going from three-point-two-five percent to three percent. So, essentially that's a savings to us, um, when that money comes down to us. And also... the administrative fees for grocery receipts tax are going from three point two-five percent to three percent. So, essentially, that's a savings to us when that money comes down to us. And also, the administrative fee is completely removed for food and medical hold harmless distribution. So, also, that's essentially more revenue to us because they're not taking that administrative fee away from us. And then lastly, House Bill four seventy-nine, and Cass can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to misspeak on this one. This was also passed for this fiscal year, and what it essentially did was consolidate a lot of the GRT increments. For example, our environmental and our fire excise. What they did is consolidate it for general use. I did reach out and ask what we needed to do, if anything. They essentially said, if you wanted to use those monies for another intention that, like fire excise, if you wanted to not use fire excise anymore because it's now in general use, you'd have to pass an ordinance to have those for general use. If you still wanted those to be under fire excise, there's nothing that you needed to do. But, that's essentially what House Bill four seventy-nine did, it consolidated those GRTs for general use. So, those are just three things for GRT I wanted to let you guys know. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta.
I just wanted to remind everyone that we are having open enrollment for our health, dental, and vision. That will go until October thirtieth. I need our department heads and elected officials to make sure that the employees are aware of it. We've sent out emails, we've sent out mails, so that the wives and spouses know. Also, we are changing the Parasmart save from Nationwide to Voya. We are coming out of the blackout period on the six. Finance is already set up with that, but we are about to be with Voya. The other thing I wanted to remind everyone, that the supplemental life insurance is still going on this month. It will end on October thirty-first, and you can get additional supplemental life insurance for the employee, for the spouse, and for the children. It's kind of busy up there, and we have all kinds of things going on, and I just hope that those people that are streaming our meeting get that information out, you know, and let everybody know, but we've had a pretty good turnout so far, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Gordon, anything to report?
I'm not sure we get it.
Sit down.
Kind of run through some.
Numbers real quick.
Everything pretty much is well within budget, but some of these items are not. In the last probably eight months, of course, we approved the forty thousand for the fence. We had an unexpected AC go down, it's going to cost us thirty-one thousand. We changed a dishwasher out, it's going to cost us, we're going to lease it, so it's going to cost us three hundred and fifty, and keep the same king style we have, style we have. We have seven thousand dollars that we just purchased for new ovens, that was not part of that. We also have the honeywell that you guys approved last, which will be new monies that will be needed for the honeywell, and that's a hundred and twenty-three thousand going forward. So, some, some items are just through routine, it just keep falling. I have some other items coming sooner additionally for, for some locks, doing some renovation on some locks.
Thank you.
Any other, Wes?
He's just going to put all of you on the spot.
Yeah, you're not doing very well.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, just to let you know, last, or to bring it back up, at the last commission, you all approved the grant agreement through the state for the complete count that they were here talking to you about today, we are awarded sixty-nine thousand and change for that. We have hired Sodder Miller, which has, he, they have Russ Doss working for them, and he's heading, heading up getting that complete count committee together for us. He worked for the city of Hobbs and helped them with their last census, so it should be, we've got some people that are, have done it before and have the experience, and hopefully we'll get a good count, so.
Thank you.
He does that to people, you know?
Damn.
Thought you were going for your gun.
Should have had to sit back a little bit. Any other, any other comments, announcements, updates? Being done, we'll move to item twenty-four, county commissioner comments, announcements, and updates.
Do you have? You don't have anything?
Well, I guess, well, twenty-three, twenty-four, who? Sheriff scared me. Um, I do, apologies. Scroll up, scroll down, need to put my Walmart glasses on and be all right, but. The item that, I guess, just to give you an update, I've, I've been on seat just, just a month, a couple of days shy of a month, and I've had the opportunity to go around and meet with some of the elected officials, not all of them, the sheriff and I are going to meet next week. I have a couple more remaining, I've got most of the department heads. And I've tried to gain some insights and understandings as to how we can work on, on efficiencies, alignment, engagements with, with other, other communities within the county, and, and so appreciate the time, you know, that commission, those that I've been able to meet with, I've yet to meet with Commissioner Wood and Commissioner McCutcheon, but I will, I will catch up with you and see what, what time works, but I think there are opportunities for the county to continue to enhance performance, enhance capabilities, work, work to provide services that our citizens look to the county for. And so, I realize the honeymoon period comes to a close at some point. I think I'll stick around. I don't know how long the, the trial period is, or the warranty period is, but, so, I, I really, I wanted to, some of these, some of these particular elements have been a little trial by fire, right? The, uh, standing up part of the EOC, you know, preparation for, trying to be prepared, trying to be proactive, and that's what I'd like to, to see us do in the county is, with our departments and our elected officials, is being as proactive as we can on, on all fronts, and there are many fronts that the county's trying to deal with. I'm, I'm impressed and, and kind of amazed at some of the things that the county is able to accomplish that not many of the public really have visibility to. And so, you know, kudos to those departments that, that do that day in and day out with the resources they have and, and the, the monies that they've, they've got in their budgets, so. As we work together to try and find ways to help them be more effective, you know, we'll, we'll come back to the commission with alternatives and recommendations for your consideration. We're going to work to, to try and be less in a firefighting mode, no offense to fire services folks, but, you know, be proactive in what we're doing and, and bring you items that the commissioners need to, to weigh in on and decide on, and try and keep some of the other day-to-day activities off your plate and, and on the county administration's radar. So, we'll, we'll make some recommendations about some of those elements in the future, so. I appreciate everybody's time and, and insight in helping me get up to speed. If you see that I'm missing something, or you don't think things are going the way that you'd initially envisioned, shoot me a text, call me, call me on the carpet, that's, that's okay. That's not a problem, I'm, I'm, I'm here to, to contribute and here to, here to help, so I appreciate that, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, item twenty-four, county commissioners comments, announcements, and updates.
I'm going to keep mine very brief because I would like to go home at some point this evening. I just want to say thank you to everyone involved with the EOC. I know that it's tough, it's hard, it's long, and it's challenging, and Josh, if you could pass that on to Jen, I know I've texted her several times, but all those involved, from the sheriff's department down to all the other departments, and we just really appreciate it and appreciate you guys and appreciate the information so we can get it out to our constituents, so, thank you very much.
I've really got, I've really got nothing.
I missed the last commission meeting because I had the flu, so I called my wife and told her that, she was already in Tennessee, and I told her that I was sick. And, and the conversation was made short because I was going to be there, because I was her ride home, so. So, anyway, it took me two, three days after I got down there to, to recover from a twelve-hundred mile trip. But, the wedding was beautiful, and, but I knew I had to be there, I wouldn't see the fifth first anniversary, that is today.
Congratulations.
That's it.
All right.
Still alive.
I don't really have anything, I'm just waiting to see if Artesia did anything that, that we should all know about, or.
We're going to hear shortly.
Anything that you're going to.
We were sick of our stomach in the fourth quarter.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a, I'll make a comment.
We're all waiting, holding our breath.
So, that all you have?
That's it.
All right. All right, I will. Hey, but it was a good, it was a good deal, and I want to point it out, Lovington, that was probably one of the most fun football games I've ever seen, and it was important because everyone's on this side of the state. And I like to see when Lovington's had a rough, a rough couple of years, I mean, that, that was one of those games where you just check off like, oh, man, this year, that team is, those boys are something else, and it was fun to, like you said, maybe we got sick to our stomach, I'm not sure, but they, they never gave up, that's like, that's like what you want kids to look at and say, hey, look, you were getting whipped by a team that's been whipping you for a while, and you stayed in the ballgame and tied it up, and then we won anyways, but, I, I do want to make sure that's noted. But, the way it went, I, I just love, that, that's why I love sports, and that's why I love to see all those kind of things, I guess, not just sports, but the FFA, all those kids that fight so hard, and, you know, it, it would have been easy to pack up their bags because they, they really have been getting beat quite a bit lately, not, well, not this year, but to see that fight, and that, that, to me, is what, what makes, what makes this side of the state so great, what makes supporting kids so great. I don't know, I left Friday night just because we won, but also, to, to look at and say, man, those kids have a ton of fight, and it's fun to see that kind of stuff, so, I appreciate it, I, I appreciate those coaches, all the fans that came by the restaurant, we had great talks because they're excited for them, too, so, congratulations to Lovington as well, I think they're going to have a great year. They're a step down, so they're gonna, I think they're gonna be able to fight through and maybe have a shot at it, so, I think y'all's game got delayed, right? Storm, y'all, we had just missed out on that, thank goodness, so, yeah, it was pretty rough, so. I, I bet, yeah, y'all had to come back, too, I saw that, I mean, you, you see that fight, so. Other quick things I want to point out, pretty cool the sheriff got to do, I mean, I don't know, at this point, you've got to have Trump's number because you're whipping him all the time. You know, you got to escort him off his plane, you got to be in Washington, so, really cool stuff. Nice, and you could take a friend, I'm just saying, I'm, you know. She's definitely, I would take her over me, but, you know, no, but that's pretty neat, thanks for representing our county, you've done a great job, and, and we sure appreciate all that stuff, so. The only other thing, my comment on Washington do nothing, I really am truly disappointed, the fact that this USMCA that we support a resolution has gotten no attention at all because they're too busy doing nonsense that does nothing for the country other than to continuously divide it, but let's not focus on these important bills and legislations that in front of you, because that's not what the American people want you to do, so. I sure wish they'd get their act together, support Trump, don't support Trump, that, that's not the point of it, you're supporting the American people, and you're supposed to be serving these constituents, and they're doing a pretty poor job of it, so. That's all I have to say about that, our, our, our group especially, I haven't heard anything on any point, and we've sent these letters, we've done everything we can to try to engage with them, and they're busy doing whatever they're doing, because I don't even think they're doing them, Pete, well, I know two of them are, they're pretty excited about it, but, pretty disappointing, so, that's all I have to say about that. Thank y'all for everything, y'all do a great job, I'm glad we're not like them, I will say that, I think we've listened to the folks, and I think we've done a lot of great stuff for our, our county, so, we need to keep it up.
Thank you, Commissioners. Whether we do it now, or whether we do it at the end, there, there was a support resolution in the consent agenda that we want you folks to stick around after the meeting to sign, as, that's what we'd agreed to do, so. This guy has that, and before you scamper out the door, we'll get your signatures on that, please. With that, that takes us to item twenty-five, executive session. And I think we have some items on the agenda.
You can bring me a Frosty or something.
If you want to, we need a motion to go into executive session, and then we'll set a timeline.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session in accordance with State of New Mexico Open Meetings Act, section ten dash fifteen dash one dash eight, two, seven, and eight, which also, which authorizes the board of county commissioners to go into executive session to discuss limited personnel matters, threat of pain litigation, and real property.
All right, we have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
We convene tomorrow.
Yeah, really, what's a realistic, I'd like to have numbers that make sense to people, because we've lied every time. We're really bad.
I went to, especially since it's.
It's kind of late, those that want to go home, I totally get it, I mean, I don't know why you don't want to stay for the party, but, what are we saying, eight? How fast can we knock this out, eight-thirty?
That's what I think, eight-thirty.
I mean, we can knock this, right, eight-thirty? What do you think, Cass?
I don't think A one, B one, and two are going to take any time. The only one that might take a little time is Roberta's, I think.
I think they want to do that first, so we can get.
So they can get out of here?
How long on yours, is it going to be long, or?
Twenty minutes, we've tried it in twenty minutes.
All right, so twenty minutes on her, ten on the rest, let's say eight-thirty. Is that realistic?
I think it is, just make it realistic.